April 6, 2022, meeting to order. For those at home, this is the only meeting that I call to order as we reorganize the school board after the recent elections in March. I'm going to explain the process and then I'll ask for a nomination. The first matter that we consider is the chair of the school board. In a couple minutes, I will ask for a nomination. If a nomination is put forth, I will ask for a second. If we have a second, I will ask for discussion. At the conclusion of the discussion, we'll vote. If that nominee passes, that person takes over as the chair of the school board and my role is done. We then repeat the process for a vice chair and a secretary. We will also ask that you appoint two signers of the manifest. All other appointments could be done next month after the board has had time to give input of what you're interested in and work with the chair offline. Donna will need the two people that are going to be signing the manifest to actually sign tonight, so we'll have your official signatures on record for Kelly. Are there any questions before I ask for a nomination? Excellent, seeing none. Does anybody have a nomination to be school board chair?
We'd like to nominate Amy Kelner for chair, please.
Second.
Ms. Fareed has nominated Amy Kelner. Mr. Mann has seconded that. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment on this nomination. And I'm sorry I'm shouting. It's hard, over here it's very loud with the fan on. Amy is eminently qualified for board leadership. As the parent of Hollis School District graduates and a former PTA chair, Amy knows the Hollis schools and community very well. But she's also a CPA with her accounting degree from Cornell University and a former auditor with Big Six accounting firm Arthur Andersen in New York City, where it turns out her accounts included major consumer brands like Liz Claiborne and Snapple, as well as several nonprofits. Amy has worked in nearly every board role over the past four years. She served two years as chair of the board's policy committee and the past two years as the board's representative in the superintendent evaluation process at the SAU governing board. This year, she led our negotiation team for the support staff collective bargaining agreement and for the past two years, she served as alternate representative to the Hollis Budget Committee. She's also served the past two years as the board's representative to the RSEC School for Students with Unique Needs. Over this past year, I've been fortunate to work with Amy in her role as vice chair. She has met each of her board commitments with prompt and thorough attention to detail, skilled problem solving, big picture perspective, and effective consensus building. She is kind, poised, and discerning, and I believe the board, the staff, and the public would benefit from her service as chair of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think this nomination is a long time coming. I'm very excited for the year coming and happy to see.
Carol, did you have something?
I concur with previous comments.
Excellent.
I as well. I think Amy's going to do a fantastic job. She's more than qualified and look forward to your leadership.
Thank you all. At this time, there's no other discussion. I will take a vote. All in favor of Amy Kelner's nomination for chair of the school board, please raise your hand. That is five to zero, and at this time, I'll pass the chairmanship over to Amy to do the vice chair, the secretary, and the two manifest signers. And congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, thank you, Tammy, for those kind words. Thank you all for your votes of confidence, and I will do my best. Okay, so now I am seeking a nomination for the vice chair of the Hollis School Board for the 2022-2023 term.
I'd like to nominate Carol Roy for vice chair.
Second.
Discussion.
Carol's done just simply exemplary work over the past years that she's been on the board. She's served as the budget committee representative for the past two years. She served on the negotiating team with Amy as the, for the support staff contract. She has represented this district in impromptu comments, public from her seat here, but also in meetings around town that required an informed and present-minded voice who could articulate the value the public gets from the work this board does and this district does, and I think she'd be exceptional in the board. Thank you.
Yeah, I feel this is a natural progression for Carol to take on this leadership role. I think she's done many of the things, you know, whether it's Budcom rep or other committee work that has, you know, made her distinct as a leader. So I think this is a great position, and I'm also excited to see this as well.
Anything, any further discussion?
I concur. Carol, you're awesome.
Thank you. Me too.
Okay, all in favor of electing Carol Roy to the position of vice chairman of the Hollis School Board for the 2022-2023 term? Excellent, five zero zero.
Super awkward to vote for myself. Thank you for your kind words, friends.
You have to vote for yourself, in my opinion, because it says that you are committing to the rule.
Right. Correct. Correct.
That's how I view it.
Okay, now I'm seeking a nomination for secretary of the Hollis School Board for the 2022-2023 term.
I nominate myself as secretary of the Hollis School Board.
I'll second that.
Would the person motion want to say any words about her nomination?
I have exceptional handwriting.
What are your qualifications?
Any further discussion?
And attention to detail.
We must remember that the yeoman's work of someone we never see here in our meetings, and that is our recording secretary, Dawn McMillan, who does phenomenal work and is really the backbone of the continuity and status of this board's work.
Great. All in favor of electing Tammy Fareed to the position of secretary of the Hollis School Board for the 2022-23 term? Excellent, five zero zero. Thank you, Tammy. Oh, okay. Now I'm looking to appoint two signers of the manifest and one alternate. Do I have any volunteers to sign the manifest?
I'm happy to participate if needed.
I've been doing it, so if someone else wants to, they can take it, but I don't mind continuing it.
Okay.
Going back to it, yeah. Unless Rob wants to jump in.
I'll always do it if you need me to do it.
You should keep it.
Okay, so we are going to appoint Brooke and Carol. And Tammy, I'll appoint you as the alternate, if that's okay?
Fine.
Perfect. Okay, now I am looking for a motion to enter non-public?
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
You got to read it, read under what reason?
Yeah, should we read it?
You got a motion for the reason.
Yeah, I'll read it and you can just say so moved. So I'm looking for a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-A colon three, Roman numeral two, A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, and C, to discuss a matter which is discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself.
All right, so moved.
Second.
I need a roll call vote. I'll start with Rob.
She's already doing better than me.
Rob.
Brooke, aye. Tammy, aye.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy, aye.
We're going to go to the conference room?
Back in public session?
Yep.
Okay, are there any agenda adjustments?
The administration doesn't have any.
Okay, any adjustments from the board members?
None.
Okay, moving on to correspondence, resignations, and nominations.
I have a couple resignations that we would need to accept, and then I have some nominations. The first resignation, I am writing to you this email to inform you that I will resigning from my position as case manager effective June 30th, 2022. I appreciate everything in the Hollis Upper Elementary School for the strong relationships I have made, the continued support I have received from the staff, and the motivation many of the amazing educators have provided me with. I have learned so much this year, I will forever cherish the experience and opportunities Hughes has provided me with, and that comes from Russell Newman Nicky.
Do we, motion for each individual? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Russell Newman Nicky?
So moved.
Second.
Jinx. Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
The second one is, please accept this email as my official resignation as school counselor at Hughes. I will not be returning, and my last day was actually March 25th, 2022. Please note that working for Candy Candy has been a pleasure, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with her and SAU 41. And that is from Evelyn O'Connor, the interim guidance counselor here at Hughes Upper Elementary.
May I have a motion to accept Evelyn O'Connor's resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great.
The last resignation, Dear Mr. Corey, I'm writing to tend to my resignation as a special ed intensive needs preschool teacher in the Hollis School District. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to work as a preschool special educator at Hollis Primary School this year. I will be resigning at the end of the 21-22 school year. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to work in Hollis. I have truly loved making, I have truly loved working with Hollis' youngest learners and their families. I wish the Hollis School District and the Hollis Early Learning Program the best, and that's from Jill Tracy.
Motion to accept Jill Tracy's resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Next, I have a series of nominations. These are for the positions that have been advertised since the annual meeting when the budget was passed. The first one is Abigail Samsel, S-A-M-S-E-L for the last name. Abigail would be joining us as the library media specialist. She has a bachelor's in history and art from Simmons College, and she has a master's in secondary education from Simmons College. She is presently the librarian at the Lincoln Street School over in Exeter, and before that she was in Raymond. We're very excited to have her, and she came highly recommended by the committee. She would be at a master's plus 15, step eight, for $64,304, and I would ask that you include the dollar amount in the nomination.
Can you say that dollar amount one more time, please, Andy?
Sure, $64,304.
Is that at Hughes or at HBS?
Hughes.
That is.
Hughes. Mrs. Nickerson is retiring.
Yes.
Help us all. So, I move to nominate, to accept the superintendent's nomination of Abigail Samson, Samsel, as library and media specialist at Hughes, master's 15, step eight, for $64,304.
Second.
All in favor?
The second nomination is Jennifer Rochelau, R-O-C-H-E-L-E-A-U. That is for the school nurse position at Hollis Primary School. Jennifer has her bachelor's in nursing from the American College of Education, and her master's in nursing from the American College of Education. She is presently a nurse over with the Goffstown School District, and she'll be joining us with her master's, step 13, for a salary of $71,674. Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, thank you.
Six seventy-four.
It's very hard to hear who it is.
I know, that's part of one of the pieces that's getting fixed with ventilation.
So I move to accept the superintendent's nomination of Jennifer Rochabo, is that what you said?
Yes.
Rochabo, as school nurse for the Hollis Primary School, at master's plus 13, at a salary of $74,671.
Second, can I?
Second.
Second, so seventy-four, right?
Seventy.
Seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four.
Seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Second again.
Okay, all in favor?
The third nomination is Rae R.A.E. Nedison, K-N-E-D-E-I-S-E-N, for a third grade position at HBS. She has her bachelor's in elementary math education from UNH, and she has her master's in elementary education as well from UNH. So she'd be placed at master's step seven, for $60,731. She would be joining us from the North Hampton School District over on the Seacoast. She has been teaching third and fourth grade for her three years, and also does ESY during the summer.
And you said $60,731?
That's correct.
So I move to accept superintendent's nomination of Rae Nedison.
Nedison.
I beg your pardon if I mispronounced it, for a third grade classroom, that's master's step seven, for $60,731.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
We have a bunch of these, huh?
The next nomination is for Jacob Barry. Jacob would be joining us as a school psychologist. He has his bachelor's in psychology and mental health rehab from UNE. He has a master's in professional psych, Mass. School of Professional Psychology, and he's pending his CAGS from the Mass. School of Professional Psychology. He'd be joining us with his master's plus 30, step two, for a salary of $56,120, and Jacob is presently working with the Nashua School District.
So I move to accept superintendent's nomination of Jacob Barry for school psychologist at Hughes, correct?
For the Hollis School District.
Hollis School District, all right. Master's degree, master's plus 30, step two, for $56,120.
Second.
All in favor?
Next, we have Kathleen Turner, T-U-R-N-E-R, for the guidance council's position at Hollis Primary School. She has her bachelor's in psychology and education from Wheaton College, and her master's in school counseling from Lewis and Clark University. She would be at master's step 11, for a salary of $67,824, and Kathleen is currently with the Acton Boxborough School District, and is coming here to be closer to home.
Excellent. So I move to accept the superintendent's nomination of Kathleen Turner for guidance at master's step 11, at a salary of $67,824.
Second.
All in favor?
The last nomination is Kate Casey Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-S, as a kindergarten teacher at Hollis Primary School. Casey has her bachelor's in elementary education from Keene State, so she'd be coming in at a bachelor's step four, for a salary of $51,109, and Casey would be joining us from the Raymond School District.
From where, Andy, I'm sorry?
Raymond.
Thank you.
I move to accept the superintendent's nomination of Casey Matthews for kindergarten teacher at bachelor's at step four, right? And at $51,809.
One oh none.
Fifty-one thousand, one hundred and nine?
Correct.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. I'd like to just take a moment and thank the principals and their staffs who participated in these sessions. We are still in the hiring process, but it has gone very, very well so far, and we're very excited with the individuals who have committed to us for next year.
Excellent. Awesome. Thanks, Andy.
Okay, moving on to minutes. We have several sets to approve, I believe?
So can you give me just a second, since I'm the new secretary here? Can't the old secretary do this?
Want me to do it? I'm on there.
Sure.
It could be my farewell gift, if you want.
You're so generous.
I would do it very dramatically, too.
Okay, so we are looking at meeting with the following amendments. In each instance, it occurs, replace member Howie with member Arthur. Page nine, line twenty-six, replace knit with it. Page twelve, line five, replace such with just. Page twelve, line thirty-one, replace your with you. Page nineteen, line thirty-nine, insert a period at the end of the sentence. Page twenty, line thirty, replace form with from.
Second.
All in favor? Great.
So I move to accept the minutes as amended. I should have said amended, never mind. I move to accept the minutes, hang on two seconds, I've got two different things going. Yeah, of the Hollis School Board's February eight, twenty twenty-two meeting with the following amendments. I'm sorry, this is the Hollis School Board Public Hearing?
The.
Wrong. I'm mixing them up.
The meeting itself is no amendments, just as presented.
Right. So the Hollis School Board Meeting of February eight, twenty twenty-two, as presented, that's what I was looking for.
Second.
So sorry.
All in favor?
So I move to accept the minutes of the meeting of the Hollis School Board Public Hearing, February eight, two thousand twenty-two, with the following amendment. Member Arthur should be identified as absent from the Hollis School Board Public Hearing, having arrived at seven P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
I have stayed.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Word zero, one.
And I move to accept the minutes of the Hollis, of the meeting of the Hollis School Board from March nine, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Extension.
I have stayed.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Word zero, one.
And I move to accept the minutes of the Hollis, of the meeting of the Hollis School Board from March nine, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to accept the minutes of the Hollis School Board Annual Meeting, March nine, two thousand twenty-two, with the following amendments. No.
None.
None. There are no following amendments, I beg your pardon. No amendments as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you. Okay.
Just a question, Andy, do we have to certify the S.A.U. budget vote, or are we doing that in May?
That is done by the S.A.U. board.
At the S.A.U. board.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I do recall that now, sorry.
Okay. We are right on schedule.
May I ask a quick question? I'm so sorry, now that we just voted on all of that. Wasn't our March ninth meeting, prior to the annual meeting, a non-public? So do we need to identify that?
So we had, I believe we convened and.
We had a public session in order to have the non-public session.
So we just are, we have lingering non-public meeting.
So we need the minutes of the non-public.
Okay.
To come up for, but you make a good point.
Thank you.
Next month is May.
Okay. Okay. So we are right on schedule. It does not appear that we have public input.
Keep in mind that this is Hollis, rather.
No, I am aware. I am aware. I didn't want to presume, but, okay. Excellent. So then we will move on to the principal's report.
I'd like to thank Candy and Paula for providing the update, and I'd just like to highlight a couple of the things for the board. This is traffic safety month, so you'll see some placards out there reminding people about the use of seat belts or safety belts. We will be doing AIMS web testing, and that's going to be happening in April, and that'll give us another data point to reassess where our students are after the pandemic. I did want to address, we are still working with our lighting company. We've changed over probably six hundred fixtures, and we're adapting ourselves to how they work. In some buildings, I walk down the hallway, and before I get to the room, the lights come on. In other buildings, I have to walk into the room, and then out of the probably six hundred fixtures, there have been a couple that we have had to call the company back for. But overall, we're very happy with our lighting and what's going on. The spring cleanup is underway, and we're going to be repainting the sensory pathways outside. We get tremendous use out of the pathway in the hallways. It's kind of fun, sometimes I'll come in and there'll be a child who maybe had gone to the bathroom or seen the nurse, and you see them all by themselves going down the sensory hallway, doing all the different things, and it's really a wonderful break.
I mean, Rob just tried it out, and we were coming back in from that.
Yeah, it's, everybody likes to try it. It's an amazing thing, and it's a nice little stress break. The broken playground slide down at H.B.S. has been replaced. It's been here for a while, and with the nice weather, we were finally able to get that in.
There was much rejoicing.
Yes.
By the second graders, I know.
Yes. Both schools are collecting shoes, and we'll be donating them for underdeveloped countries. And we're starting to put our activities back in the books. So we're talking about the end-of-the-year promotion ceremonies, field days, all of those things, and we're really excited about that. At H.B.S., they want to welcome Donna O'Keefe, a new paraprofessional, and Chris Paradise is our new special education secretary. Hughes is seeing their spring bulbs coming up, which is just wonderful, and we're hoping next week's temperatures of potentially being in the seventies are going to really spark that moving forward. As you can see, our enrollment basically stayed the same, it's plus-three overall, a couple move-ins and just one or two move-outs, so that stays very stable. And then the principals, as always, broke it down by class sizes on the other enrollment page. And that's it for the principal's reports, unless you have any questions.
Why did the cookie go to the nurse?
Because it was part of the joke of the day.
It felt crummy.
Thank you.
It felt crummy.
It felt crummy.
Yep.
That's an important note in there, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just want to comment that when my child was so tiny, she wasn't even at the primary school, that's when that slide was put in by a professional team that came with the set and the parents volunteering to help install it. Do you remember that, Rob? The installation of that playground?
No.
Well, it's, it has lived its long useful life, is all my point.
Okay.
I notice grade three, we got, we're up one in grade three. That puts us, it looks like.
Our number's in good shape.
Total of ninety-four. Are we, we getting, if we get just a few more, we'll be, you know, we're going to be at spec, right?
Yeah.
But grade, grade four bumps up to twenty-three, so I think we're in good shape.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed the next year we get a little more headroom, but.
Yep. And they're still building in the community. Houses are going up rapidly.
Yeah. Okay.
With the chair's permission, I'll turn it over to Donna to deliver the revenue expense report, and I'll pass these over to you, I just need signatures on the nominations.
Okay.
Okay. In January, we reviewed the revenue expense report, and we had a projected fund balance of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars before we funded the retained balance fund for F.Y. twenty-three. The current revenue expense report, as of March twenty-fourth, shows that we have been able to save on expenses in certain areas, such as hiring savings, staff shortages, reduction in lane changes, and by freezing the budget early on to account for all our unanticipated special ed costs. While expected revenue looks to be increasing from what was budgeted, this leaves us currently with an anticipated unreserved fund balance of five-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. With this amount, we are able to fund the F.Y. twenty-three trusts that were voted on in March in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars. If we were to fund the retained fund balance for F.Y. twenty-three with two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, which is the same amount we used in F.Y. twenty-two, then the current balance balances would leave us with a projected fund balance of forty-three thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. The retained fund balance we are suggesting is less than the maximum allowed amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. So although this number is very conservative, it is likely to improve and become a higher projected fund balance. We will continue to monitor the expenses over the last three months of the fiscal year.
Donna, the two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars number, that's the, the, the.
That's a formula calculated.
Legislative maximum, right?
So it does change every year.
It's not our imposition, it's, it's the maximum imposed by law.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
What's the eighty-two thousand food service unreserved fund balance?
That is because the, the food service expenses and the grants offset the transfers in the, up top in the expenses, so they always offset each other to be zero. So that eighty-two thousand, it will vary throughout the year, so we just put it there to make it offset and be zero until we're done.
Gotcha. Okay. Yep. Any other questions?
I guess I'm curious about this food service thing. Are we, do you think, Andy, do you think, Donna, that we'll be seeing continued federal funding of the lunch program?
I do not think so. I think it will go back to a pay program with a free and reduced component for those who qualify.
And do you feel like there should, you, would you expect any financial hitches in that adjustment? I mean, I know people, we're always very sensitive that the food service pay for itself.
I, I think the concern would be the allocations for free and reduced and meal costs are based on almost two years ago, and what we're seeing with the inflation of food may cause us to look at a price increase this summer, or maybe even during the school year, once we know more of what that will run.
Okay.
Because it's going to be a drastic difference. Now, one of the offsets that we haven't got a lot of at the elementary schools is your big sellers, I guess you would say, are your à la carte items, you know, the extra money that mom gives you to get the cupcake or the bag of chips or something. During COVID, that really hasn't been the case, you've been getting just your lunch. So there's that offset that'll come back, too. So food service will be a very interesting piece that we'll have to monitor next year.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else on the revenue and expense report? All right, moving along to the facilities update.
With regard to facilities, first, all the leases and bonds across the S.A.U., as you know, we passed three of them, one for each district, have been all sent off to legal counsel. Kelly's working with them, making sure that the packets are all in the correct order, and those will be sent to either the bond or the lease company, and we would expect to hear probably end of the month, early May. With regard to the projects, I provided a pass-out list to you, and what I wanted to do is provide you everything across the S.A.U., because, again, we're trying to balance the different projects and trying to time some of them together, because we have some parking lot refinishing, we have some paving, we have a host of different things that are going on, and sometimes we can get a better price if we're going to do a roof at H.B.S. and a roof at the high school than just one roof in the district. You'll see that we have identified all the different pieces, and I'll just run through the list kind of quickly for you. We'll do a gym inspection at every school, which is a yearly item. We have it inspected for safety, bleaches, tables, all of those pieces. We will be adding bollards at both Hughes and H.B.S. As I think I alluded to, we're looking at what I'll call a more attractive type of planter bollard, rather than just a post in front of the building, so that we can have our students use them for, to plant flowers and different things of that nature, so those are on schedule. You'll see the estimated cost, and then we've also identified the lead person on each of those. For those of you who might not know Ben, that's the assistant at the S.A.U. for facilities. So he works directly with Lance. At the Hollis School District, we have the bond projects, which include cladding the gym, interior doors, bathrooms, air source heat pumps, and roofing. We're still debating how many of those we can get done. Lance is the lead person there. At H.B.S. and Hughes, we have no-touch batteries, that's kind of a new expense, but when we moved away from touching the paper towels and all those, those are all battery-operated now, so Chuck and Ed will be going through that. At H.B.S., we're doing door hardware, window shades, ceiling tiles, classroom flooring, and asbestos for window number one. Chuck has the first floor, Lance has the asbestos window one, and just so folks know, we don't have any exposed asbestos, it's all self-contained, it's just something we're looking to eliminate as we go through future years. At Hughes, we have the skylight shades, the gym floor refinish, the diesel pump maintenance, the water bottle filling stations, cafeteria tables, swing set and installation, annual mulch, benches, picnic tables, sprinkler tank repair, cafeteria flooring, classroom hallway flooring, carpet extractor, whiteboard paint, and library bookcase replacements. And that takes us through the Hollis projects. So there is a wealth of projects going on. The Hollis School District will run their extended year program at the middle school again this year. We felt it worked really well, and for many families, it was one drop-off, which they really appreciated. The other piece is it gives us an environment that's fully air-conditioned for those programs. So Patrick at the middle school is well aware of that, he had them last year, and he's looking forward to them again this year. Any questions regarding facilities?
Thanks for the breakdown.
You're welcome.
It's going to be a busy summer.
Yes, it is.
Andy, this is a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once we put it down on paper, we realize that.
Yeah. The one thing to listen to it, and something else to look at it.
Yeah. But again, some of them are projects that we'll be doing the legwork on, but for some of our rooftop ventilation units, it's going to be ten months out before those can be delivered. So that, it might be on the list, but it might actually be a February install, where we're not in school to bring the crane in and lift it here, or at the high school, or wherever that unit's going to go. So it's more, from our point of view, getting everything coordinated, knowing everything's been put out to bid, everything is accounted for, and then dealing with supply chain issues will be a major, major thing.
How many of the items on the list, Andy, are things that can be done while school is in session?
Almost all the rooftop pieces can be done. We can do, like, door replacement, second shift. You know, we can do a number of things like that. We could do a tile project like this gymnasium over a weekend.
Okay.
You know, so there are a lot of different things that would, you know, may change from a Monday to a Friday, you know, during the course of a week. And again, what we'll try to do is continually update the boards, but we won't do anything internally with students in the building. You know, unless it was, you know, the normal electrician incoming to fix something like that, but we're not going to bring ten contractors in.
Right.
To that environment. It's not fair to the teachers, it's not fair to the kids, but we may, you know, inform teachers for that week, they might need to be out of the building by four, so that they can have a second shift of four to eleven.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's a good time to have a facilities director on staff.
Yes. Yes. I don't know how we used to do it, now that. With the chair's permission, I'll jump into the preschool. Kelly, the business manager, is recommending that the current tuition, which is twenty-four-hundred dollars or two-hundred-and-forty dollars a month, that we look at that and raise that. It's been that rate since two thousand fourteen. What we're talking here is our preschool tuition, so these are our youngest students. They are students who are there to represent the non-handicap peers, so there's role modeling and all of those pieces for our special ed programs for three- and four-year-olds. Every year, we end up with a waiting list on this. We are, I was contacted one, by one board member who wanted to make sure that we were ensuring that if somebody had a financial reason for not being on that list, that we could accommodate that, and we will. You know, we absolutely will. We're either going to do it via the website, or we'll put it on the form to reach out to the principal if there's a concern. And obviously, once somebody's in the program, if a concern arises, we've always worked with families, because again, unforeseen circumstances do come up. And the program is funded by taxpayer dollars. It's your special ed program. The key element is what we have learned, that the role modeling by the non-handicap peers accelerates the development.
Love it.
And it's, it's amazing to watch. I, as I spend more and more time in education, I sometimes think we underestimate the ability of three- and four-year-olds, but at the same time, it's that balance between not wanting to rush them, but understanding what they're ready for, and more and more families are seeking daycare, so it may be something that we, as a district down in the future, look at as a, something that we may consider offering, you know.
You mean full day, as opposed to half-day?
I don't know what I would put forward because of the developmental piece, so it[1794.85] So it may be a half day for, you know, in an educational program and see where that goes. But it would have to become a, you know, either the government, which could happen, will start to offer more funding for three- and four-year-olds, like they did with kindergarten, or it would become a self-funded program like we used to have for kindergarten. Obviously, that creates a space issue, but I think it's something, when you're looking at the strategic plan in five and ten years out, should at least be on there for a discussion. So Kelly's recommending an increase in tuition by a hundred dollars a year over the next three years. So next year would be twenty-two, twenty-three for twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-three, twenty-four for twenty-six, and twenty-four, twenty-five for twenty-seven hundred dollars. And this will just give us, the district, the ability to better offset some of those costs. Again, we're not trying to generate revenue, we're just trying to offset some of the costs. And I gladly take any questions around this. We do have a deliberative item, so it can be discussed again later when we go through the actual vote on it.
So the recommendation from Kelly is to maybe revisit these rates every five years, starting in two thousand and thirty. Do you anticipate any policies that need to be written and put in place so we build that kind of practice?
I, I think we have policies in place, just like the SAU rent.
Yes.
You know, where we just need to start listing the things that should be in the strategic plan, because that's, to me, where it should be located, and we're working on that. So we know that if we're going to do this in five years, so we're building the strategic plan five years out, it would say for the Hollis School Board to revisit preschool tuition along with the Brookline, because Brookline's got the same recommendation and approved it last month, because they were just a media head.
Just so it's written down somewhere, because we deal in so many things that it's hard to say, oh, it's five years, we need to look at this, right?
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a great point, Rob, because the other, as we know, what will also happen is there'll be changes between boards and administrators and people. And the more we can get what I'll call structures and procedures in place, the greater chances that items don't get overlooked.
Yeah, it just operationalizes things.
There's no other question, I'll jump into.
Should we, I have, I have a couple other questions, but it also can be saved. I'm not sure, you said maybe save it for, it doesn't actually really apply to the tuition costs, but I guess it's related. It looks like the, the program as it stands now is fairly small. Eleven students in three-year-old and eight students in the four-year-old program. Is that at capacity for like the space that we have? Because if more special ed students needed the services, right, would it be that we'd have to shift how many peers we're bringing in? Or is there more space for more than eleven and eight kids, I guess?
There is some wiggle room on space, but the other piece would be if we had more move in, we would want to find space for these services. These are students with significant disabilities, most likely going to be with us potentially to age twenty-one. And the sooner we can get them into our programming and working with their non-handicap peers, the greater gains they will experience. We went to this a few years ago because we just felt we could offer much better educational programming. It also allows students not to be on the bus. You know, these are students who would, potentially could be placed out of district, and some of them would be on a forty-five-minute bus ride each way, you know, starting at five, six, you know, till they're twenty-one. And, and these have been very well received, and I'm really proud to say, you know, I've seen it firsthand. I, I very much enjoy going into those rooms and watching those instructors work with these children, and the gains are monumental, you know? And I think that's why I would encourage the board to really look at increasing space if possible. And that why, that's kind of why, in my mind, you know, in three, four, five years, we know the SAU to spend money on that would not be, have a real good cost benefit. But there might be a cost benefit to doing something for preschool and having some supervision pieces that attach the SAU wing there.
I want to point out that the program requires a matching
Yep.
of children with disabilities and children without those disabilities. So we can't simply reduce the number of seats for students who have no disabilities in that preschool program and fill those seats with additional students with disabilities. So for example, currently, we have nineteen between the third and, three and four-year-old programs. We can't simply have nineteen kids with identified disabilities and not have seats for the neurotypical or whatever the other kinds of normative balances that we seek, because the program's built around a partnership. So that, the, the space issues can become significant, depending on the demand from kids who we're responsible for, who have those special needs, to Andy's point about space and your point of view.
That was my question. Yeah.
And then just another piece of this. So for the pre-K three program, that represents not just students who have turned three by September thirtieth, like you would for the four or the kindergarten program, but for any student who's turning three during this school year. So while we have eight, we have some in the pipeline that we know will be starting in May or June, based on their birthday. And then they wouldn't progress until four, until they hit four by September thirty. So there's a lot of nuances of this, that sometimes just looking at a chart of numbers.
So that's why maybe those plus one and plus two come in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And one other thing on that, because you mentioned wait lists. So do we know, I mean, how extensive are the wait lists for this program that, if that's something you can share?
We always have more than enough non-handicap peers on the list.
Okay.
Okay.
You're not talking about a wait list of students who have educational needs.
No, no, that wasn't the question.
Typical peers. I just wanted to clarify.
Typical peers, yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to review another memo from the business office from Kelly. And then we'll potentially take an action on it later. A little bit of, for the background, this is about tax-deferred plans. Currently, all three districts in the SAU offer a 403B tax-deferred retirement savings plan to their employees. All employees can choose to contribute to an amount of their choosing up to the limits established by the IRS. We have one teacher from the Hollis School District that has requested that the board add an additional type of tax-deferred retirement savings plan to what they offer. This plan is a 457B plan. The district can offer two plans. This would allow an employee to contribute to both plans at the same time, up to the limits established by the IRS. Kelly's recommendation, which I concur with, is since adding a plan does not, does involve a fair amount of work to put it in place, she is recommending that we survey the district employees to establish an interest in participating in a second plan. If at least five people respond affirmatively, then we follow through with the authorization and set up the 457B plan for the Hollis School District only. So this is the only district we're getting the request in. Kelly believes that if there are five people that are interested, it justifies the effort in the SAU business office, and we can move forward. So what, when we get to deliberations later, the action we're looking for is to support her memo, which is to do a survey to find out if we should offer a second plan. And we would come back and inform you if, if the number of people that are interested and move forward from there. But right now, we're only aware of one. That doesn't mean there aren't plenty more that are interested, it's just one person has brought it to our attention.
And I know she mentions that it involves work. Is there a cost to the district?
Just our normal manpower, so it wouldn't be an additional person. It's more in the setup and getting it running. And after that, it's kind of the same way we would administer a 403B plan.
Are there other districts in the SAU that have this offering?
No, this is the first request we've had.
And is it something that we can offer
Yes.
across the SAU?
Yes.
Like, so this manpower could then allow it to be offered elsewhere, or is it district-specific?
I, I think, once the setup is done, it's minimal manpower, similar to the 403B, it's just that initial setup. So that's why by asking now, getting a survey before the end of the year, my thought is that Kelly would use the summer months to get this up and established.
Okay, thanks.
We, we know that person power, manpower in the SAU is at a, at a premium. Do we feel like we have the resources and time to spend on such, such, something like this? And I'm concerned about any timelines, that things must be in place by a certain timeline that maybe even puts additional pressure on folks that would be involved in these activities for setup.
In my discussion with Kelly, I, I don't think she would be making a recommendation that would put a burden that her staff couldn't handle. I think we also look at this as, as we enter what is becoming a very difficult hiring market, sometimes subtle differences can be the defining factor of why somebody will take a position.
Yeah.
You know, it's very important, our teaching environment, our class sizes, people want to be close to home. But once we're through that, they're looking at, you know, what other pieces are offered. So again, once we get the survey, if Kelly tells me it's, the effort would not be justified by the number interested, then we would reject it as an administrative unit and come back and inform you of that. If it goes forward and all of a sudden there are ten people interested, I think what it would happen, it would snowball to other districts. But at the same time, we could roll the other districts out in a very measured fashion.
You kind of read my mind. My next question was, does this move, if we get the minimum five-person interest, does this put the district in a better competitive position against other districts? Or are we catching up with other districts?
I would say, the way I would look at it would be slightly different. Many of our young staff, when they come on board, are not looking at necessarily 403B and all those things. You know, as father of three boys of that age, we wish they would.
Yes.
But they don't necessarily do that. But I think when you look at who we hired tonight, coming in at Masters twelve, eleven, that group is looking more at, you know, here's where I'm at. They're looking at our salary scale, they're looking at our insurance benefits, they're looking at our retirement benefits, and those are deciding factors. So I do think it makes you slightly more competitive. I don't think it's a deal breaker by any stretch.
Sure.
But I don't think it hurts.
I guess at those levels, retirement actually becomes a real thing.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, I have a couple of questions. Are there a lot of other such plans? Will this start an avalanche of more alphabet soup plans from, that that becomes a manpower issue across the border?
I, I don't, I can't really think off the top of my head right, no.
So there aren't so many of these?
No.
Okay. And the survey, of course, will be SAU forty-one wide?
No, the survey will be the Hollis School District.
Professional staff.
So now I'm confused about the opportunity. Can you explain why it would be limited, you know, I'm thinking the five?
We need the five in one district.
To be from one district.
Think of it this way, if the five are across the SAU, that's four different payrolls.
Okay, so it is, it is
Right.
it does have a mechanical part to it, in terms of how it's laid out across the district.
Each, each district is a separate payroll.
Right.
And each district has their own, what I'll call quirks. You know, like in the co-op, if a teacher covers for another teacher, there's a set dollar amount, the same thing in Hollis.
So there's some mechanics involved in each district, okay.
Yeah, so in terms of our payroll, a lot of times people ask us, like, could we outsource it? And the way the CBAs are, there's no way to do that.
No, 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 all right, that's interesting, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Gina to talk about our favorite thing, which is the calendar.
School calendar, okeydoke. So inside the packet, you see a draft twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. It's very traditional in what it looks like. It has staff returning on the Monday prior to Labor Day on August twenty-ninth. It has school beginning on September first, that Thursday before Labor Day. There's Columbus Day in October. If you notice, there are some Es in here. And so we are proposing for early releases as we have had this year. Without those early release days, we really could not have been quite so productive in all the curriculum work that we've done, that you'll see next month. So those have been absolutely critical. And we try to space them out throughout the year at kind of various times and on different days. So we have a proposed early release on the twenty-second of November, so that leads us up into Thanksgiving holiday. So that allows families to take off a little bit early if they're going out of town. Moving up to November eighth, that's voting day, so we're going back to proposing a professional day on November eighth, with November eleventh Veterans Day, so, you know, no school-ember. Moving along to December. Given just the days of, you know, where the holidays lie and where January first lies, it's a very short December break. So a proposal would be to, to add the second mid-year professional day on December twenty-third, as we did this year. And that allows, once again, families to have a little bit longer of a holiday. And it allows our teachers to decompress, do some professional work right before heading off to the holidays, so they're ready to go in January, when we return on the second. There is another E on January thirtieth, so that is a Monday early release proposed. Looking into February, we have another February break that is, more than half of it's in March, for our winter vacation. Returning to school on March sixth. That March seventh is a voting day in, doesn't impact Hollis, but in Brookline, they do vote at CSDA. And the board was very concerned about the voters in the building during the school day, and also the traffic at dismissal time between folks trying to get in and vote, and folks trying to pick up their children. So they requested and approved a calendar with an early release on that day, to try to get students out a little bit earlier and clear up the congestion when folks are trying to vote. Moving into April, we have our April break at a typical time, the fourth week. We have a May twenty-fifth early release proposed. And then we have Memorial Day. And June eighth, last day of preschool, June nineteenth, the last day of school. That would include five snow days, so without, it would be the twelfth. And June twenty-first would be the last day for teachers, if June nineteenth is the last day of school for students. So that is the calendar that was approved in Brookline, no pressure, but.
I just have an inquiry. Why would the early release day in May be the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend and not that Friday?
Indeed. So what we found is Friday early release days are a disaster for the co-op, because it's a late start Friday, PLC morning. And so you had to cancel the late start to do the early release, and that create, created quite the confusion for students and their arrival time and families with their drop-off time. So it, we, as a leadership team, thought that the best thing to do is to switch to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then, like I said, the Brookline board moved one of the days to a Tuesday. So there's actually two Tuesdays in this particular proposal.
Got it. And I know it's not this calendar, but are we talking about the declaration of last day of this school year as well, as part of your update tonight?
That is a superintendent decision. Typically, we announce
Andy's just looking down.
graduation date first and confirm that before. We've had some crazy April snowstorms, but.
We are most likely looking at Friday, which I believe is the seventeenth of June. You know, unless we had some unforeseen circumstances, that would most likely be it. And then we have a couple of teachers' days in Hollis after that. And it would, again, not finalize, but most likely follow the tradition of being a half-day.
Excellent. And so when do you expect that to be final-final?
We have the co-op next Wednesday, and we'll finalize graduation date. And once graduation date is finalized, we typically don't change calendars unless, I said, let's something really unusual. It'd have to be like a flood or something monumental.
Don't, don't put that out there.
I'm figuring snow's over, I'm not guaranteed the spring rains are going to be kind. But they help the wells.
I have a little calendar comment slash question. Sometimes, when there's been early releases or just timing stuff in general, I end up like scouring around for what the actual timing is. Is it, is it something that could easy, easy enough be on the, the calendar? I don't know if that's too many.
So it is on the calendar now with an E, that was a new addition this year from last year.
She means the actual time. Like, what does early release mean, like twelve o'clock?
For each of the schools, I don't know if that's too much information, but.
I don't know if it's best on this calendar, because every school has a different end of, even though it's early release, there's a staggered dismissal. But let's make sure that is clearly posted on the homepage.
Yeah, yeah. And it probably is. I just know that I've had times where I'm like, what time is it?
This is what social media is for, is for parents saying, I do not know when my kid's supposed to be at school or is leaving school because of the schedules. There's just so many details.
With early release coming back in, it would be great.
Is that something that could be just added to the legend at the bottom? You just break it out by school?
Well, that's what she was saying. She was saying that the different schools have different timings.
That's what I mean. So you break it out by school and say, early releases this time for, you know, whatever.
Yeah, we'll put it as many places as possible. I would say that people don't necessarily hold this calendar up.
This goes on my fridge.
Our house, most people do refer to this. This is most people's bible is this.
Right, but what they refer to is the one that comes out from their building principal.
Not this one.
And that's the one that should be on. Because ours is the master, and then parent-teacher night, all those things are added by the building.
Sorry to open a can of worms.
Their answer is yes, but later when the principals hand them out.
Okay, perfect.
Makes sense there.
Let's put the different version. Thanks, Gina.
Moving on to deliberations. Okay, I am looking for We already did all the nominations of the new ones, but not of the full list. Oh, we have to do the full list.
Correct. That's the motion for the full list.
Okay, gotcha, never mind, I'm sorry. I'm looking for a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for teachers' nominations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Excellent. To see what action the board will take regarding the reauthorization of the H-Step Committee to proceed forward with projects and renovations outlined in the bond warrant article.
So moved. Do you need me to read it?
Well, do we need to change that H-Step to H-CAP?
I think the wording is not good. I think we should amend the wording of this. You know, H-Step was the original, and it was associated so strongly with that first funding package. And H-Smart was associated with a funding package. We're suggesting, or we've come up with a acronym for the current bond. Kelly and I discussed it, H-CAP. It's based in the capital improvement plan, capital advancement plan, CAP. It's easy to pronounce it, and hopefully it'll be a capstone. So if we could change amend this to, Carol, would you object if I do the motion?
No, please.
So I'd like to move to authorize the Hollis Capital Advancement Plan parentheses, H-CAP Committee to proceed with projects and renovations outlined in the bond warrant article.
Second.
Discussion.
I like it.
Excellent, that's good. Good.
If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion regarding the business manager's recommendation to increase the pre-kindergarten tuition rate.
I move to approve the recommendation of the business manager to increase the pre-kindergarten tuition rate by $100 in each of the next three years and revisit the rate every five years, beginning in the year 2030.
Second.
Discussion.
Nothing additional.
No further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to see what action the board will take regarding the business manager's recommendation to offer deductions for 457 plans in addition to the 403B plans.
I move to approve the recommendation of the business manager to survey district employees and if a minimum of five respond affirmatively, establish a 457B plan for the Hollis School District.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Zero, zero. Okay. To see what action the board will take regarding the proposed 2022, 2023 school calendar.
I move to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Discussion. No discussion? All right, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you. I think that brings us to, oh, no.
We've got the
Yes. I am, I'd like to, a motion that the board by roll call state agreement to adhere to policy BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics.
Did you just ask for a motion? Are you asking us to roll call vote?
I'm asking for a motion, I believe.
Yeah, you want a motion.
I want a motion.
So I I will move to do that.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. And do we need
I think I think this is a good practice. It's always been a practice of the board to do this. It puts each one of our members, you know, on the record to that there's certain rules of engagement and ethics and things that we need to follow. That's why we have the policy. So I think it's always an important time in April that we do this.
Question, isn't this something required? Is this required by RSA?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
There's an RSA.
So we do it every year at the beginning. It's just such good practice, we would do it anyway.
Right. We've always done it.
I mean, it's nice that you don't know that because
I didn't know there was RSA.
Right, it's organic to our practice here, but it is also required by the state law.
Okay, are we ready for the vote? I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Rob.
Rob, aye.
Brooke, aye.
Tammy, aye.
Carol, Roy, aye.
Amy, aye. Okay. That brings us to our policies work. Brooke, I'll turn it. Oh, actually, I will not turn it over to you. Not quite, sorry, sorry. One more, the investment policy. I'm looking for a motion to adopt policy DFA investment.
So moved.
Second, okay. Discussion.
Are there any alterations being recommended for this?
No, this is another one of those that we're required to do annually.
Yeah.
We have not been doing investments, but there was a time when interest rates were very high. And you may have had a pool of money that you could invest for 30 or 60 days in a very secure environment. So this just gives us that ability, should we move forward. Before we did that, obviously, we'd come back to the board and say, this is what we'd like to do and and seek your permission.
Well, to that point, Andy, just as a question, and this is not something I've ever thought of before. But we're signing a bond per the warrant article that just passed for, I forgot what the interest rate is, it's something small. What if interest rates go up? Are we allowed to invest whatever we're not spending yet over the two-year project? Is that even, I don't even know how that works.
I wouldn't consider it on the bond. But what happens sometimes is either on the town side or sometimes in a school district, if you get your revenue from the town to the school of the tax payment, that could be a very large sum of money, which is used to run your operation of the business. But there was a time when you used to be able to go out 30, 60, 90 days and get investments and generate some revenue. That those times have not happened for quite some time, but we're required every year to make people aware that that authority rests with the board should they so choose to do that. I don't think we're going to see that during this year either.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Okay, now, Brooke, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. I move to accept the third reading and adopt policy EEA, mandatory drug and alcohol testing.
Second.
Discussion.
I don't know that there's much more that needs to be.
There are no changes from the last reading, correct?
Correct. Yeah, no changes.
So this is the third reading, so we're also going to adopt.
All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Excellent.
Well, excuse me, to Rob's point, did we include in the motion
It's usually in the motion that we're
To accept and adopt. So this says second.
I did say that.
Brooke said it.
She did? I didn't hear it. I beg your pardon. Well, I'm glad I voted yea. I'm so sorry.
Okay. I move to amend the first paragraph in section, okay, hold on a second. I think I'm missing something here. Let me just make sure I'm on the right. Okay. I move to amend the first paragraph in section D by deleting no later than October 15th, 2020, and the third paragraph in section D by deleting non-discrimination and accept the second reading of policy ACE, non-discrimination, as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
So I'll just add that the district's human rights in parentheses, non-discrimination, is just an additional title. So to clean up the non-discrimination because it's either or. And then to remove the date of October 15th, 2020, because once it's passed and once the plan comes before you, it's it becomes a moot point. The plan is near finalized, and once all of these policies are current with the new legislation that has passed, the plan, you'll see the plan most likely May, June at its very latest. It's just that the language that's in the policy is in the plan. And so to approve a plan and then still have language that is changing seems, you know, like a silly order. So we're going to take a look at all of these policies and then make sure that the language matches in the plan, and that'll come to you next.
Nice.
Yes. So the date is referencing the having a plan by, but that, but and and
Yes, yeah. So once it's there, then we'll review it every two years.
Any further discussion? No. Okay. All in favor? Thank you.
I move to accept the second reading of policy ACE, procedural safeguards, non-discrimination on the basis of handicap disability.
Second. Discussion.
There are no changes from the first reading on this one.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't move to adopt, since there's no changes by at this point with second reading?
I'm fine with that.
Fine with that as well.
I would support adoption tonight.
Do I need to change my motion?
Probably.
If you want to.
Or we can do that, and then you can make a new motion that says adopt.
Or just restate, or just adopt it after this motion. We don't want to stack motions, that's for sure.
Okay.
So this is all in favor of accepting the second reading? Okay.
Move to adopt policy ACE.
Yes, second.
That's right.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Excellent, okay.
Motion to accept the second reading of policy EF, food service management.
Second. Discussion.
For the same reasons, if we have, if we have attained second reading and there's no changes here, is there any reason why we would not adopt EF?
Agree for the same reasons.
Yeah.
And my motivation here is to try to get a lot of this backlog through and off our plate by May.
Sounds good.
Because I was very surprised to see this money items under deliberation. So I'm just kind of motivated to kind of clear the plate if we can. So that's where this is coming from.
I had a question on this one. I know in the past that we've had volunteers in our food service. I wasn't sure if we still are using volunteers. And if so, is this the certification for the sanitation course, if that would also apply to volunteers?
So most of our volunteers, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I was under the assumption that our our volunteers were not so much with the food, but with like the cleaning of the tables and other aspects of lunch.
But it used to be, years ago, we had volunteers serving the food.
So in Hollis, we'd have two volunteers per service or more on heavy-duty food. Like salad day, there'd be four of them.
Something. I would imagine then a volunteer would also need to complete the course.
We we can put it as part of the volunteer videos that they
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it doesn't, it doesn't prevent it from happening. And I guess the other piece would be if they didn't do that component, they couldn't volunteer in the kitchen.
Right. Yes. Makes sense.
But it doesn't change the wording of what we are needing to approve.
So should we still move forward with an adoption motion? Would you guys
If you're comfortable with the policy, we can put the other pieces in place with no worries.
Sure. Okay, so should we do it the same way? We'll approve this motion and then like, okay, so we're voting on approving the second reading, policy EF, all in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Madam Chair, I move that we waive third reading and adopt policy EF.
Second.
Any further conversation? Seeing none, all in favor? Five, zero, zero. Can I ask a general policy question? I just refreshed my memory. What's the timing of us having our policies reviewed by legal? I know we talked about it, and there was a backlog, and I just wasn't sure if we had an update on when that might be happening.
The update, or the the timing of it was supposed to be summer of 2022.
Right.
I'm not sure if we're still in line for summer '22, so I'll reach out to them as well, or again.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
We got into a nice cadence there.
Okay, all right, I'm looking for a motion.
You missed it already.
Okay.
We're done, I don't know what you're doing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Undebatable.
Okay. Excellent.
I'd just like to point out that our new chair landed the plane 14 minutes early.
I don't want to be living up to that every time, so enjoy it.
We used to have a We used to have a little with Brookline.